Okay, this regular meeting of the Luray Town Council will now come to order. Please stand and join me in a moment of silence. I'll ask Councilman White.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Danielle, will you please call the room?
Yes, Meredith Offner?
Here.
Mr. Vickers?
Here.
Ms. Lillard?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Mr. Pettit?
Here.
Mr. Sowers?
Here.
Mr. Webb?
Here.
All right, consent agenda. Oh, excuse me. We have any additions to or deletions from the agenda?
Mayor, I have, I moved that the town council add agenda item 12 to be closed, to be a closed meeting, sorry, for consultation with legal counsel and potential disposition of real estate properties to the agenda.
One second, babe. Discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Okay, now let's move on to the consent agenda. Ron, you down there?
If you insist. I moved to approve the filing consent agenda, the minutes of the regular council meeting, December 12th, 2022, the council payable totaling $125,283.49, and financials for period ending December 31st, 2022.
Second.
Should we add the asterisk things at the bottom?
No.
Okay, discussion?
Should I add the asterisk thing?
I think we said, I think, no, Ron.
Okay.
Is that right?
Correct.
All right. Then moved and seconded, Danielle?
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
All right, I've moved one signed up for citizen comment period. Does anyone here want to speak in general comments? All right, moving on, we have the fiscal year 2021-22 financial report and audit, Robinson, Farmer, Cox Associates. Marissa, nice having you here this evening.
Thank you. I'm Marissa Helmick. I'm the audit manager at RFC, and I work closely with Sadie Bagoon, who is at another meeting today, so I'm filling in on her place. So today I'm going to discuss the audit results, our auditor's opinion, our internal control report, and our compliance opinions, and our single audit results. We're going to highlight the government-wide financial statements, the fund financial statements, the general fund revenue and expenditure analysis, and some statistical information, and then we'll have a conclusion, and then at the end, any questions that you guys have. The objectives: the expression of opinions as to whether your basic financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects in conformity with GAAP. And we're going to report on internal control in accordance with government auditing standards.
Oh, it's a click through.
Do you need immediate ban?
Nope, that's fine. So we issued an unmodified audit opinion. That's the highest level of assurance that we're able to provide in our profession. So the opinion states that "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business type activities, and each major fund of the town of Luray, Virginia, as of June 30th, 2022, and their respective changes in financial position, and where applicable cash flows thereof for the year then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America." For internal control and compliance, we had no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies identified for internal control, and then we do some compliance testing over urban highway maintenance, Virginia retirement system, and Virginia public procurement compliance, and we had no noncompliance in those areas as well. This year, we had a single audit on the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, your ARPA spending for the internal control over federal programs. We had no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, and then we had no findings or question costs in relation to ARPA. We noted no material noncompliance with direct and material compliance requirements of the program. So this may or may not be another single audit next year, depending on how you guys spend your money. We're at about 880,000 spent after this year, so that's about half, about another 800 or so left. So government-wide financial highlights, these are exhibits one and two in your report. They're prepared on the full accrual basis, ending net position of $18,677,106, of which about $2 million was unrestricted. This is an increase in net position of about 1.1 million, and net investment and capital assets are about 16 million. In addition, about 200,000 is restricted for CDBG expenditures. So this visual just kind of shows that net position is kind of staying, remaining stable for the past few years. The green represents net investment and capital assets, so that's the majority of it. The little red, it's a little hard to see, but that's the restricted, that's for CDBG, and the blue is your unrestricted. Exhibits three through six are prepared on the modified accrual basis. This is really similar to your budget that you prepare every year. Fund balance in the general fund was about 2.8 million. This is an increase of 448,000 compared to last year. The general fund unassigned fund balance is about 2.8, which represents 42% of FY22 general fund expenditures, and we'll talk about it a little bit later, but that's great as far as a metric. Unrestricted cash and cash equivalents is 4.4 million, and then restricted cash is 75,000, again relating to CDBG. So this is talking about fund balance over the past five years. There, the only two colors hopefully you can see are blue and green. The green is a little portion at the very bottom, that's nonspendable. That's going to be inventory and prepaid, so that's money that's already tied up. You can't spend it. And then the other is unassigned, so that's available for any expenditures ongoing. So here is where we look at unassigned fund balance compared to expenditures. So I think my line is in the wrong spot. The threshold for the town is 15%, so way over what your guys' policy is. It's looking great. General fund revenue analysis. So you can see that compared to the budget, you're about $1 million short in revenue. Well, a few things. So large positive variance in local taxes, about 700,000. That's related. Increase in bank franchise taxes was more than expected. Meals tax was more than expected. Lodging and sales tax were also a little bit more than expected. And then the shortage is in intergovernmental revenue. So state, you guys have budgeted for some VDOT revenue sharing that you didn't get, and then the federal is ARPA that you just haven't spent yet. Or on the expenditure side, so a little bit short in revenue of about $1 million, but you also underspent the budget by about $1 million, so no concern for us there. The two big numbers you're going to see are a little bit short in public works and parks and rec. Those are related to ARPA projects. So for tax assessments, you'll see this is over the past 10 years. Green is personal property, and that jumped significantly this year. Increase of about $12 million in assessed values, so that's where that big difference is coming in. For this year, collected within the fiscal year of the levy, you guys are about 96%, so you'll see that it ranges anywhere from 94 to 96. That's really good compared to other localities that we see. And then you'll see on the very right-hand side that down there at 2013, you're at almost 100%, and this year is at 96%. Proprietary funds, so these are business-type activities, and water and sewer funds combined, ending net position of 6.9 million. Unrestricted net position is about 740,000. Overall net operating loss of 122,000. This is really to do with depreciation expense. That's $839,000, so that's a noncash expenditure that kind of causes that to go into the negative. It's an increase of 378,000 compared to FY21's net position, so positive things there, too. So in conclusion, we had no significant deficiencies or material weakness in internal controls. We have one management comment, and that's on your procurement policy. You should have gotten a copy of that in your reports. So we just recommend that council consider increasing the thresholds for bids. Right now, they're very low, and I'm sure it keeps your guys' employees really busy, but there's some state and federal guidelines that you guys could increase those, too, if you so desire.
What is the threshold for a $1, 60,000?
Oh, it's much smaller than that, $1,000?
Yeah, our, we have a small items purchase policy, which covers purchases up to 10,000 in 5,000 dollar increments, and then our, say for example, our transportation projects is $25,000.
So it's for capital investments, only right?
No, it's for everything.
It's for everything.
For everything?
Any bid for anything has to meet those limits. So what the audit staff had requested, and we reviewed with them, was potentially increasing some of those limits to meet state and federal guidelines, what their lower limits are, and what that does is it allows us to acquire things at a less formal atmosphere, like we're able to not do a formal bid for everything that's 26, you know, $24,000, $26,000.
Less formal is also less expensive quite often.
Time and money, it's time and money advertising, yep. So there's some advantages there, too.
Do you provide guidance on?
Absolutely.
Best practices?
Yeah, we absolutely can, yeah. Yep. Danielle and Brian, you guys can reach out.
Sure, we'll reach out to say.
Yeah. And then we had five adjusting journal entries that we guys provided to Danielle that I'm sure have already been entered, so that is it. But if you guys have any questions, glad to answer them.
I was just noticing on the borrow, borrowing limit, you can borrow up to 10% of your assessed total assessed real estate.
Legal debt.
And we're, I think we're somewhere around 8 million, which is only 20, like 25%. Is that, is that typical? Just, I mean, are most communities in that? I mean, I think it's very good.
Let me get to our table that shows that.
And then see if I believe in the back.
Page on there, look.
Oh, I just saw this. I was reading your report this weekend.
Table 13, page 107 and 108. So, yeah, based on your assessed values, the limit is 47.5 million dollars, and you guys are at 8.2, so yeah, great.
How are most communities at that limit? I'm just kind of curious.
Depends. So your bigger localities are a little bit higher. You know, counties have to support the school boards, so if there's like construction projects and stuff, we see that. Put it over. We do some places that are in pretty bad fiscal distress, so that they're borrowing more, it's going to be higher. But I would say for a town your guys' size, you're right there on par.
That was about the one I was on.
Yeah.
Can you go back to that tax revenue?
Yeah. Steve, do you still have that up?
I don't think that's in the pack. Is it? Was that just in your presentation?
Yeah, let's see. The levy collected or the assessed values?
The assessed value.
The little graph. Yeah, so that's based on table seven, page 1100 and page 101.
You had mentioned on the personal property, and then the real estate, I know that on there, it's like 1/10.
Yeah, so real estate is $475 million, whereas personal property is 47 million. So to be able to fit it all in our graph.
475 million on real estate, personal property was what?
47 million.
Okay, thank you.
Any thoughts on why the personal property just jumped up so quick?
Car values.
Those car values.
Like 30%, it was like a 30% increase with NADA values.
Which is.
I drive a whole car.
Yeah, that's across the board everywhere we go. This has been a crazy increase this year. Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Council, any more questions?
I guess I will ask, and this isn't necessarily within the purview of what you've done here specifically, but you've worked with a lot of localities. I'm wondering, looking at us and just generally, are there any places that we should identify in like the medium to long term as like potential trouble spots where expenditures might outpace revenue? Are we in really good shape?
Yeah, you guys are in really good shape. You guys are good about looking at your budget, seeing what you're spending, budget to actual, and getting any amendments in that are needed. But, yeah, we do some people that aren't so great, so it's a refresh to see you guys in such good shape.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Bought a little discount on the audits then, right?
I don't know about that.
We'll be broke next year.
Nice trajectory.
Yeah.
Anybody else have anything?
No, I was just saying, Danielle, Steve, Brian, Danielle, everyone in the staff does a great job, and, you know, worked the town for 10 years and have been in meetings for the last 17 years. We've always gotten good audit reports, and do different staff folks, different council. So it's something that, you know, citizens should be aware of, and everyone who's been here, it's a, it's a good thing that the town's always been in good financial health, so thank you.
Thank you again.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Safe trip back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We don't need to approve that, do we? Accept it, okay. Rescue squad? Is anybody here? Steve, have you heard anything from them?
Yes, sir.
Have the request, or we need to wait for them to be here?
They simply wanted to talk about their needs. I will contact Mr. Malina tomorrow and see if he can make it to your table.
Okay. LDI, Ms. Elliott?
Good evening. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Welcome, Mr. White.
Very much.
Look forward to having you on the team. Just, just a little bit. Just, I've seen the kid around town, you know. The, so we had a really good holiday season. I did my little year-end follow-up that I typically do with merchants, and everyone gave, said that they had a good year, that they were, that they are very pleased, and where we're going and how the town's moving forward. The last couple of weeks have been interesting. I have received about three phone calls from people that are interested in doing business in Luray and are looking for spaces to do businesses, everything from gourmet shops to restaurants. So it's interesting at the calls I'm getting. We are going, we do have some new businesses that are going to be coming to Main Street. One I won't disclose this evening because she's still working on getting it put together, but Watch and Warrant plans to open January the 20th. They have been holding interviews at the visitor center, and I think they have pretty much completed the hiring process with their staff, so really excited about them. I think that's going to be amazing to have another restaurant downtown. The year's end at 10, of course, we had to cancel due to weather, so we weren't able to have our New Year's Eve event. And the next upcoming event that we have with LDI will be Mardi Gras. Mardi Gras this year falls February 21st, so we will be having our shop and dine on February the 25th on Saturday. We typically do it the first Saturday after the Tuesday of Mardi Gras, and that's about it.
Also, any questions?
Jackie, you said there's three businesses opening on Main Street?
There are. There, I have been, I have talked with three different businesses, and there is one of those businesses that has already found space and is in the process of opening, but I have not been given her approval to make that public announcement yet. I mean, the rumors are circulating, but you know how that goes. So I would rather not disclose it this evening without her permission. And then, like I said, of course, Watch and Warrant, and I don't know if you all saw the article in the Page Valley News, Portion Vine has announced that they will be opening in the fall of 2023. They had originally thought perhaps spring, but it's going to be in the fall of 2023, so. And I'm anxious to see with what the folks are going to do with the previous Baby Moon's restaurant as well. And I'm working very hard to help with, to help Marine get some possible candidates to purchase Moon Shadows. And we're also working on our expansion project as well to expand, to expand Main Street.
The district?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah. What's, what would the footprint look like?
The footprint would be from, would be west to the singing tower. That's what we're, I'm working with Virginia Main Street with that right now, because there's so many, there's a lot of stipulations. You know, we have to, it has to be historical. There has to be, the value has to be there. So I'm in the process of trying to get that information put together so that I can take that back to them, and they can review it. And I don't know if I mentioned this last month or not, but National Main Street has started another, a new report for the Main Streets, and it's going to be, it's a self-assessment. So not only will I do the data bonanza self-assessment for Virginia Main Street, we will now be doing a self-assessment every year for National Main Street. And because Luray was designated in 2022 as an advancing Main Street, they have asked me to do it this year, because it's supposed to go into effect in 2024, but they've asked me to do it this year, and some of the other advancing Main Streets were kind of the guinea pigs to work the kinks out, basically, is what we're doing. So there's a lot of paperwork on my desk right now.
Well, go ahead.
I know from my years with LDI as well, the concern of other businesses wanting to expand.
Right.
Downtown.
Right.
Is an annual request that we would always get.
Right.
The challenge is, what's historical and what the limits are.
Right.
I'm just asking the question, if we're looking as far as to, what, like the singing tower?
Mm-hmm.
Are, how is that going to affect when we're looking at the East End, which also has those same requests?
Right, and so I've got the East End wanting me, and I've got the West End wanting, so it's like everybody wants to be part of the downtown, and I get it. So in talking with them, they've sent me the guidelines. I have to compile the data, and then they're going to work with me to help me through whether it's going to be feasible, if it's not feasible, and then what we have to do.
Because the challenge was already, and I've got to get those questions as a board member in the past, for that. When you look at downtown, just like you take Pearsonburg, Court Square, and their downtown, it's miles and miles of Main Street.
Right.
But a small percentage, but it gets to be at, what point do we define a downtown, and at what point is it the whole town?
Well.
Those are, those are challenges. If we're talking about the whole town, you've got a chamber. If we're talking about downtown, we've got an LDI.
Right, yeah. And I know that Andre has been expressing, you know, he has expressed because of the rec center, and that is a historical building, so that, they do qualify under that being a historical. I know that the folks that opened up the distillery, they have reached out. So, you know, you're having some of those businesses reaching out. And the chamber does an amazing job, but not everyone wants to pay, be a member. They don't want to pay a membership dues, and see with LDI, you don't have that. So I think that's where some of the requests are coming from, from folks that we just, they really don't want to spend that money to be a member, but yet they want representation. So I get some, that's some of the conversation that we get as well, because Gina and her folks do an amazing job.
Probably more commercial vacancies on the West End, too, don't you, than on the East End, I would think?
There are a few more. There's like three that I can think of off the top of my head.
How far does it go on E, I should note this, forgive me. How far up East Main is the designation?
Well, see, East Main, I would think would probably go to the shopping center, but there are businesses beyond the shopping center that have asked me for representation.
Main, downtown, Main Street stops at D40.
Okay.
D40 Avenue to Lee Street.
Okay.
And that was pretty much the footprint of the town.
Right.
The Green Hill Cemetery used to be in the county.
Oh, wow.
I believe that cemetery was, was put into place along the way back. That was actually on the town.
Green Hill.
I mean, Green Hill.
I was thinking of Evergreen.
Yeah, it's Green Hill, I believe.
I was thinking of it.
The old one that they're working over in front of the Lutheran Church, that used to be in the county.
In front of St. Mark's.
Yeah, Lutheran Church.
I call it the Confederate Cemetery, but yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah, so, so the town footprint, as I understand it from your back, was like D40, the Lee Street. You had the Mansion Hotel and the Mars, which is still there, but it sort of came down here through the creek and ended around D40.
Right, and as we, and the way that we are set up now, it is, it's, well, I used to say, it's from the Mimsland to the funeral home, yeah. You know, because.
So like the bakery, they could qualify for like a facade improvement.
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, we're having a conversation right now, yes.
But when you get like Miss B's and stuff like that, they're outside the store.
Yes, right.
Mm-hmm, right.
And that's why I'm saying, we're going to, as we extend one way or the other, your, those things are going to rise.
And like I said, and, you know, to that point, you know, some of those folks, like I said, they're just, they just don't want to pay a membership fees, but they still want representation, so they've come to me and like, well, you're free, you know. So that's kind of the quandary that we're in. And I know that, you know, several folks on the, there's quite a few on the East that have spoken with me repeatedly about it, and then again, of course, the two folks up on the West that have expressed the most. So it's going to be a matter of what's going to be doable and what's not, but, you know, I'm willing to work with every business on Main Street and do the best I can to provide as much support and help as I can to them, because anything to make our town grow and make our town bigger and better.
Well, as, as far as what's doable and what's not, and I've said this, put me to work and make me busy on trying to get this to happen, because I think expanding in both directions as, as well as we can opens you up to represent more, you can make more connections, they can access more resources. I mean, I think it's a no-brainer, so put paperwork and research projects in front of me, I'm ready to go.
You've got it.
Any update on the Browns building?
Oh, Stephanie. So the last thing that I've been told, and which was right around Christmas time, was that they're going to start on it. I mean, but, you know, you know, they're saying they're going to be starting on it. There, it's a matter, I think it's been a matter of resources, not only workforce, but just, I do believe, and I hope I'm not telling tales out of school, I do believe they have ordered the new windows. And so, and I know that they went down and they took down the.
Christmas theme.
Christmas themed thing.
Happy to see that.
And did that, so they're, we're, we're making progress. So I'm hoping that that is going, that they're going to start on that pretty soon.
Anybody else? Jackie, thank you. Thank you for all your efforts during the holiday season. I know the weather. I know the weather was a factor in two of the major events, but you all worked through that and we appreciate what you did.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys. Thanks.
Thank you, Jackie. All right. Special use permit. Special use permit 22-09. Now, council was requested to conduct a public hearing to receive citizen input and to consider a request for a special use permit to operate a lodging house at 109 Mechanic Street, tax map number 42A4-A-34, in the high-density residential R3 district from John Holtzman. All right, I won't read the rest of it there, it's quite lengthy. I'll open the public hearing. No one has signed up to speak. Does anyone want to speak on this issue, this special use permit? Steve, you have anything?
No, sir. The applicant, uh, sent a message to me earlier today that she was not able to attend, but, um, hopes that, um, if there's any questions, that, um, she would be able to provide responses. Uh, the planning commission did consider this at their December meeting and unanimously recommended approval of the S U P.
No other comments? Uh, this public hearing is closed. Counsel, discussion?
What's their parking situation there? Do we know? Is it only on, on street?
I believe there's two spots, there, um, on the west side of the house that they can park. They do have some off-street.
Is it their property? Because it looks like there's like edging. Felt like in pictures of it. I'm just wondering, I'm, just to confirm that it is with that house and not the adjacent property. They may just have some edging there to keep the gravels in, but.
Looking at the aerial map that you included, it appears that it's on their property.
Yeah, I believe it is.
The head, yeah.
Okay.
Green space to the.
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe that that is their, that, that is associated with the, that property.
All right, counsel, any more discussion?
I don't know if this makes sense or not, but is this house vacant right now? Is anybody living in it?
The applicant actually was living in it for a while. They have recently purchased another home in Loray. That's why originally they had this application in, uh, earl, much earlier in, uh, 2022. However, when they needed to live in it, they withdrew it. And now that they have purchased another home, they are asking us to go forward with it.
Makes sense, you know, use your resources.
All right, counsel, any more discussion?
I mean, I think for me, this is an instance where somebody played by the rules to do what they're supposed to do, so obviously we approve. But I do want to flag that it seems like we've got a little bit of a gold rush going on in the short-term rental business. And I think that just having some guardrails and guidelines for everybody would be better for everybody to make sure that that is something that serves Loray before the gold rush happens, not after. Uh, because I mean, once you get so many special use permits on one issue, I say that speaks to where an ordinance needs to be updated to address that issue. But, yeah, that's the only thing I'll flag. I think that's a conversation we've got to have at some point. But that's where I'm at.
And, uh, Councilman Webb did include that sixth recommendation that, uh, historically we would have that passed through, uh, the whole property, but now it's only to the individual owner or change of, of ownership. Uh, and that will allow the town, as we go forward, to reconsider any of these applications in the future.
Absolutely.
We need a motion.
Mayor, I have a motion. I move that the town council approves special use permit to operate a lodging house at 109 Mechanic Street, tax map number 42A4-A-34, in high density residential district by John Holtzman, with the conditions noted as presented.
I second that.
Any discussion? Danielle?
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Okay, special use permit 2212, D.R. Horton signage. Uh, council was requested to conduct a public hearing to receive citizen input and to consider a request for a special permit for signs as provided by Article 7, Signs, Chapter 802.4. D.R. Horton requests a special exception to install seven onsite and off-site signs that are prohibited by the town code. Chapter 802.4 allows a special exception be granted by the town council through the special use permit process if the condition of the requests are deemed proper. Requested signage is identified in the application and on the attachment map. Steve, can you kind of discuss, I mean, the planning commission approved some of their requests and did not approve it, is that correct, or?
Yes, sir. Uh, the application is for seven signs that were installed without seeking a permit approval from the town. Uh, subsequent to that, the, uh, D.R. Horton has submitted this request. Uh, there are a number of off-site signs, uh, at Cave Hill Road, uh, at their entrance on Allison Drive, and then near the entrance, uh, off of the Walmart property. The planning commission, in their discussion, uh, determined that they recommended approval of only the signage, the existing signage that is located on D.R. Horton property, which would be the signs that are in front of the, uh, the model home, model townhome. Uh, they did not recommend approval of all of the signage that is off-site. The sign that is at Cave Hill Road and the signs that are at Allison Drive are on property owned by Baker Development. The signage, uh, at the Walmart entrance is on property owned by the Holtzman, uh, Liberty property.
But you did say they got permission from those homeowners to put signs up, even though they didn't get our permission.
Correct. They got permission from Holtzman for that sign and from Baker for the other signage.
Seems like that one's been there a while.
All of the signage has been up for quite a while, yes, sir.
So they have to take the, I mean, the planning commission's recommending they take those other ones down, then?
Effectively, yes, sir.
Basically what we're saying, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, if, had they gone through the sign permit process, application process, as required by the town, the off-site signage would not have been approved through the sign permit process, correct?
That is correct.
And it would not have been erected if they would have gone through the proper channels to begin with.
Yes, sir. The only sign, and the sign that they have at the model home is actually larger than the town would approve. So that is one of the exceptions that the, the planning commission did recommend. Uh, and then the number of flags, uh, they've, they've got a number of flags there which exceeds the number that we would typically permit on a single site.
So how does that work? Is, it's all considered, despite having numerous lots there, it's all considered a single site? But they've sold the certain properties, so how does that? How does that fit together? They just have a patchwork of properties until they're?
Well, originally, they, originally, D.R. Horton owned all of the lots. They are selling the lots. The lot where the signage and the flag poles are located currently is still owned by D.R. Horton.
Is that an empty lot there?
No, no, there is.
It's on the houses, right?
Yes, sir.
Because it's just the parking lot to the side and then it's in front of the.
It's their model home, and so they've got.
Oh, just the model home. Oh, in front of the.
And then the signage that they have here is signage that's directing, uh, folks to where the model home is.
There's still some out at individual homes for sale too, right? But we're not, so we're not even addressing those.
The small, yeah, the small signage is, is compliant and you can have that without permit.
Some of that, okay.
Yes, sir. And what they, what, uh, D.R. Horton has indicated is that they, because they are continuing to pursue additional, uh, development, uh, along General Drive, that the, the signage, the off-site signage is necessary for them to continue to attract new, uh, folks to purchase the, the, the properties that will be developed, uh, on the northern end of, of the Baker Development properties.
Steve, am I correct that? When somebody does something that's not with the ordinance is, and we take offense to it and say, you take it down, there's no other fine? There's no other financial burden they have?
Typically, no. Uh, usually with code violations, uh, any fine would have to be imposed by the, the court once we have, um, taken, uh, once we've notified them of, of the issue and they have failed to abate it. Uh, in this case, we notified, uh, D.R. Horton and at which time they appealed to counsel for consideration. And so if counsel does not approve any of the signage, then yes, that, the, the town would then issue a notice to D.R. Horton that the signage is not compliant as with our code and, uh, the appeal failed. And if they fail to, uh, remove the signs in a, in a timely manner, then we would work with the town attorney to, uh, go through the courts, at which time there could be some fines assessed.
The quandary I'm having right now is, I want this company to succeed and sell their houses, but at the same time, I don't want to reward them for doing stuff against the ordinances because they don't get any fine for it. It just, they don't, it seems like they're not doing it the way I would like them to do it. I mean, yeah.
Yeah, I've spent more time thinking about signs and sign ordinances than anybody should humanly ever in their life have to think about. I mean, I, I, I agree. It just happens everywhere all the time. I mean, to me, it's not really a big deal, but, um, I would just go with the planning commission said. They look probably a little more thoroughly than, uh, you know, I have. So I would say whatever they recommend, it probably is reasonable. So, and I assume it was maybe, uh, I don't know if you put the vote on there, but I guess most were in agreement, Steve, with that assessment?
Yeah, it was unanimous.
Okay, so I'll, I'll just defer to them.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. There, there was one that, yes, sir, I apologize, Bill.
Was it, I'm curious, was this a complaint-driven or was this an administrative catch?
It was complaint-driven.
So it makes a difference to me too, quite frankly.
Right, and the complaint-driven is for someone who have may have pursued this same type of activity in the past, but were not approved because they asked for permission instead of forgiveness.
Makes a considerable difference, I mean frankly.
Right, if, if there was a complaint, you know, is, is this someone who wanted to do the same type of thing before, but were denied because of our sign ordinance where here if we allow, we're, we're setting two different standards.
The Baker property is, seems a little different to me, isn't it? Is that, or is it just all the same? But.
Can I speak? The planning commission thought that we did not want to set a precedent on having signs on, uh, that places that these people did not own, D-40s did not own. So we didn't even want to touch that. So we were going to leave that up to you all, but, because we did not want to set that precedent, that you could just put up a sign on somebody else's property. Didn't seem right.
It's an associated question. I'm pretty sure we have a sign ordinance against feather signs or feathered banners.
Feather banners are.
It seems like I see a lot more of those in town lately.
They're permitted for a specific amount of time for a specific event typically.
And I seem to think I've seen them up a long, long time.
And again, we are complaint-driven, so if, if you would like to.
No, I don't.
Let us know.
Let us know, much to listen to.
And, and unfortunately, um, and I think Councilman Webb would kind of go along with this. The intent of our enforcement is if it, if someone does have an issue with it, that's where we need to, to, to step in and, and ensure that people are following the rules. Most of the time, if it's not a problem, yeah, our code allows any, any home, any property to have three signs, uh, for-sale size, signs, for-sale sized signs on their property without any sort of permit. During the political season, there are a number of properties in town that have, that are covered with political signs. And again, rather than becoming the, the sign enforcement entity, we rely on our, our citizens to let us know when things are too much of an extreme or too, too much for them to bear.
One last question. Did, did you have any discussion, probably even more for Bill? Uh, but do they have any adjacent properties? What's the extent of their property? Were they maybe able to reposition some of these? Did they bring any of that up? Did you discuss that at all?
They didn't, because they weren't available to come to our.
Ah, okay.
I was really shocked that they did not come to speak to this at our.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, but, yeah.
I thought it was unfortunate, too.
Now, the, the property that they are pursuing would take them to around here on General Drive.
So, yeah, they still may have some decent visibility, just with some tweaks.
Yes, sir.
Instead of just totally tearing them down and, you know.
Again, uh, what, what they would have to do is all of the signage that they, the majority of the signage that they have along General Drive exceeds the size limit. So if they did want to move it, they would then have to come back to town council with a similar request saying, we'll put it on our property, but it's still exceeds the size limits, will you grant us a, um, a waiver? So that if they did try to move it, it would come back to y'all if we received a complaint.
Sure.
Counsel, anybody else? I need a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry.
Apologies for the interruption. I don't believe we've opened a closed public hearing.
Oh, thank you, Jason. Yeah, okay, thank you very much. Okay, I'll open the, uh, public hearing on this, which is, uh, special use permit 22-12. Anyone here to speak on that? Steve, you have anything?
Uh, no, sir. And, and again, the, the D.R. Horton people sent a message of apology, but they weren't able to attend today.
Hi, no one here else is here to speak, then I'll close the public hearing. Thank you, Jason. Okay, we need a motion.
Well, I just wanted, one, uh, one question for Jason. Um, are you in agreement that the, the suggested motion is in compliance? It's a fair take for us to proceed?
Well, that would grant you, that would grant all of their signage. If, if counsel was looking to follow the planning commission recommendation, it would, it would be, uh, in that sentence before counsel review, I would just put, I rec, I, I move the town council recommend approval of the special use permit for only the existing onsite signage, if you wanted to conform with what the planning commission sought.
Oh, yeah, I see that now. I didn't pay attention to the, so, okay.
Bill, you said it wasn't unanimous. Was the nature of the dissent there somebody who thought that y'all should be stricter or somebody who thought that y'all should be less strict?
I, I thought we should be stricter. I'm like, we have sign ordinances for a reason and to ha, go through all the work to have sign ordinances and then to just waive them, everybody, uh, who puts them up, I mean, there's great places for signs all over the county, but if you just put them up willy-nilly, it doesn't, doesn't serve the purpose of the ordinance. So my thought was, no, just, just no for that, because people follow the rules and why ask for forgiveness afterwards? It just didn't seem right to me.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
I might say, when I first got on here and Mr. Lancaster was, uh, having us go through the thickest ordinance of anything, signs and parking spaces, it really made me think. And the fact that we have so much time and effort put into the ordinances, we can't just let it be dismissed. I'm with Bill. People have to follow the rules, otherwise it goes wire, it goes haywire. So I, I will make a motion for the revised one, if I can say it right.[1664.44] say it right. I approve only the signage that the planning commission said was okay.
It's the onsite?
Onsite. Their onsite signs can stay, the rest of them need to go.
Second.
Any more discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Okay, but wait, there's more. Special use permit twenty-two dash thirteen, fourteen Brumbeck Avenue. Town council was requested to conduct a public hearing to receive citizen input and to consider a request for a special use permit to operate a lodging house at fourteen Brumbeck Avenue, tax map number forty-two A twelve dash A dash four, in the high-density residential R-three district from Valley Corners LLC. Okay, I'll open the public hearing on the special use permit. Is anyone here, I don't think anybody signed up. Anyone here to speak on this?
I'm the owner.
Oh, yes, ma'am, did you want to say something?
Uh, you guys want to hear what I'm going to say?
Yes, ma'am, if you want to, if you want to tell us, sure. You can, want to come up to the podium, or are you more comfortable there?
I'm scared.
Well, it's a small crowd, and now you can stay where you are, that's fine.
I'm pleased to, begging you guys approve my request, because that would bring some of a job into the Luray. We currently hired Brittany Montgomery to manage it for us. So if you approve it, then it's going to be, have a lot of people travel from other places to bring some money. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, very good. Counsel, anybody have questions for Mrs. Ho, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
We have your address. All right, counsel? Well, okay, nobody, nobody else here wants to speak? Steve, you had anything?
No, sir.
Nothing, okay. All right, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, discussion?
I think as long as follow the conditions, and I mean, we approved everyone's come before us, so I don't think it's been any different than anybody else.
So you are the owner of the property as well? I see there's, there's multiple owners, you're one of the owners, is that what I heard you say?
That's the same question. Does anybody live in this house at the time?
Not at this moment, not at this moment.
So if you, we did approve this, you'd have to keep it maintained for guests come, so it's, in my mind, it's a good thing.
We already do that.
Yeah, we, we make a lot of improvement right now, and it is running down the property. But now we put it into, the neighbor is right here, he can tell you that how great that is, we look right now.
She's forcing me to work on it during my winter break.
I did it.
That's why I'm here.
Well, you learn a lot. You learn a lot, eh?
All right, y'all go over this at home. Okay, now, really, have anything else the same as Ho, or any?
No, no.
Okay, all right. Counsel, any more questions?
I guess not to do the broken record act, but I, I do, again, think in the long term, it's worth thinking about putting something together, and I don't know if that's a directing staff to look at what other places do. I know it's relatively new, so there may not be that many models. But, you know, in the short term, thank y'all, and best of luck with all of it. I also have a quick question, which is, I've had some people talk about how they didn't think they were notified adequately about one in their neighborhood. And I know we notify like adjacent, but how is that defined? Is that like immediately adjacent, or is that, you know, you're across the street, you learn as well, or?
Well, no, anyone that's across the street would have been notified as well. It's basically, look at the GIS map and draw a circle around the property, and anybody that touches or is across the street would be notified.
Including corners, I believe, we had this discussion before, right? Adjacent includes corners.
To follow up on Alex's comment, I agree that, I've seen some other jurisdictions actually have like a yard sign, to where if there's a public hearing coming up pertaining to a piece of property, there's a yard sign that we would have printed or whatever with the town, that, you know, this, this property is being considered for a special use permit, and for information, you know, contact the town or website or something to go to, to where people can find out, number one, what is the special use permit for, and number two, when's the meaning of the hearing, if they wanted to attend. And just as you had said, Mr. Williams, but, you know, it might be a neighbor four doors down, but there's, they could still be impacted by our decision to change use of the property. We're in the neighborhood, maybe not exactly.
We've used signs in the past, and I think we still might have one, but I think they've been beaten up and stolen, unfortunately. But we can, we can definitely look into that, because that is another mechanism of communicating. Unfortunately, the signs don't always stay where they're placed.
You can get temporary-
But at least we've made an effort to get the word out to people, people are aware that-
Political signs, little temporary ones, order like a dozen of them.
The county uses them, or did, I assume it still do.
I know Brian used to tell us about the ones he put up, you know, for all this, I assumed it was an ongoing thing, but if we need to order more signs, say, do it.
We can do that.
And it's a, being a little bit of a hot topic, I wonder if specifically, you know, maybe you have a general sign for special use permit hearings, period, but you have one also that specifically says short-term rentals, because it's such a thing on people's minds right now.
We can, we can look into that, see what kind of signage might be available.
Thank you very much.
All right, any more discussion on this special use permit? Jason, I closed the public hearing, didn't I?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, Danielle, you call the roll, please.
We need a motion.
Oh, we need a motion?
We need a motion.
Special use permits are killing me. All right, any motion?
I move that the town council approve the special use permit to operate a lodging house at fourteen Brumbeck Avenue, tax map number forty-two A twelve dash A dash four, in the high-density residential R-three district by Valley Corners LLC, with the conditions as noted, as presented.
Second.
Any more discussion? Now, Danielle.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Ho, thank you. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
Don't work him too hard, yeah. All right. All right, we need to appoint a vice mayor. Obviously, the old vice mayor is enjoying retirement. The vice mayor is selected by a majority of the council, and it's, of course, we're at the January meeting. In the absence of the mayor at a meeting, the vice mayor shall fulfill the municipal duties of the mayor. In addition, the vice mayor attends civic functions to represent the town when the mayor is unable to attend. So counsel, what is your pleasure?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd reached out to Ron, and perhaps some others did as well, and I asked if he would be interested in position, and I told him I'd be, I'd love to nominate him for vice mayor. So I'm happy to make the motion that would move the town council appoint Ron Vickers as vice mayor for Luray.
Do we have a second?
Don't understand, this is more responsibility, no more pay, is that the way it goes?
Oh, he's going to, he's going to welch on me now.
No, 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 I just had to say that. Thank you very much.
Well, also, Ron, you're the longest-tenured council person. Are you this, y'all been the same time?
No, he was a little before me.
Okay, okay.
But he would represent the town well, you know, he's well spoken, gets along with everyone.
Right, right, right. He's a senior statesman and-
He is, yeah.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. So the way we do this, we just kind of do one at a time, I think, you know, it's been a long time since we've done this. But, all right, so all in favor of Ron for vice mayor, I guess, or, yes?
Aye.
Congratulations, Ron.
That's vice mayor to you.
Vice mayor, yeah.
Do I have to move my seat, or is that, do we have to talk about that?
We'll talk about that.
Okay.
I'm having a rough evening. I can't do too much more of that. Okay, all right, let's see, where are we? Board of Zoning Appeals, the appointment recommendation. Does that come from Ron, or?
We had a very good closed meeting. We met Kelly Levy, and I'd like to move that the town council recommends appointment of Kelly Levy to the town's Board of Zoning Appeals to the Page County Circuit Court.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Appreciate her coming in and talking to us, didn't really have to, but I appreciate it, yep.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
All right, the Greenway Sculpture Donation, that donation has been withdrawn. All right, Steve, you want to handle the part-time minimum wage adjustment?
Yes, sir. Council's requested to consider approval of the new minimum part-time salary that's been increased to twelve dollars per hour effective January one through the Virginia Minimum Wage Act. The only affected salary minimum is with our part-time positions of twelve dollars per hour. And so we would just request council's approval of the updated FY twenty-two twenty-three salary plan.
Part-time people would like to hear this, I'm sure.
They don't have any choice, do they?
No, sir.
No, I was going to ask that. So is it necessary, are we able to fashion a motion where we just say that we, the minimum will be commensurate with whatever minimum wages have at the time, so that we have administrative permission? I mean, we have to do it by law anyways. Is that something we can do, Jason?
Well, this is just be effective for your budget year, I suspect.
Yes, what I'm suggesting is, is it, is it possible to put forth a motion that we adopt an amendment for salary plan to increase the minimum part-time salary to the then-current minimum wage?
Yes, sir.
As mandated by the state of Virginia?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it's already scheduled to go up again next year, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a thing, we'll just keep kicking it down the road.
All right, Promise Utility Payments, Steve?
We need a motion.
We need a motion, well, okay.
I mean, I'll move as I just rambled.
Okay, yeah.
I move that the town council adopt the amendment to the fiscal year twenty-two, oh, fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three salary plan, and moving forward to increase the minimum part-time salary to the then-current minimum wage. I didn't say that very well.
We understand you.
Does it make sense?
I'll second that.
Any more discussion?
Fix it.
Danielle?
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
I almost said no to my own motion there, but. I could have said it better than that.
All right, now, Mr. Burke, Promise Utility Payments.
Yes, sir. Council's requested to consider authorization of the town's participation in the low-income household water assistance program established by the Virginia, Virginia Department of Social Services and administered through Promise to assist eligible town utility customers that are experiencing financial difficulties with their past due home utility bills. The town would be responsible to provide and confirm eligibility requirements for the, our customers, process the payments received from the Promise organization, and promote the program to our customers. In order to participate, customers have to work directly with the Promise organization, and then funding for that program is from the federal government through the Commonwealth of Virginia. Funding assistance is provided on a first-come, first-served basis through Promise, and the assistance of up to twenty-five hundred dollars can be approved for each household by that organization.
So we get the money, or we never see, we distribute the money, or the organization?
What happens is, if council approves, we would then work with Promise to advertise to our customers that they have to contact Promise. Promise has both a website and a mobile app. They have to then contact and say-
Promise would validate their eligibility.
Correct, and we would have to confirm their eligibility to Promise. Once that happens, Promise would then divvy up whatever funding is still available through the state to those individual customers, and rather than sending them a check, they would simply send that, that funding to the town to make up for whatever deficient utility bill exists.
And it is a one-time benefit to that household, even not given a longer basis.
One question that comes to mind. If someone contacts them for approval, or being validated, if, I'm wondering how the confusion may come to where, if they're in the process, but they failing to pay their water bill, but they think it's being taken care of, the, where we go with how this could get difficult in someone thinking that it is taken care of, when in fact it's not taken care of, and how that may compound over time, and then it may never seek, never receive approval. They may not qualify, but we may have gone periods of, where they thought they had qualified, and then had been, I'm just wondering about the extra burden the town may have when they're collecting or trying to-
From the town's perspective, we would continue to read their meter and send them a bill. If they did qualify, and if Promise did make a payment on their behalf, that payment would then be reflected in their next utility bill that would indicate, you know, they received so much funding towards their, their deficient water bill. And that would be it, effectively. We shouldn't, we're hoping, the program is advertised that there's limited input between the town and Promise and the customer. The customer has to work out with Promise their eligibility. Promise then works out whatever funding is available, communicates to that, to the customer, but then simultaneously sends the check to the town. And then, once we receive it and process it, we are, their bill would then reflect whatever payment was received.
Okay. And, and I'm not against someone getting assistance, that's, don't get me, don't confuse anything with that. Those that need assistance, I would love to see them get assistance. I'm just wondering, when we bring in a third party into our billing as the town, how confusing that could become, or the burden on staff, when, I know some of the burdens I've heard in the past in, in collecting fees, when they're just simply trying to collect fees for services provided. And now with a third party in it, I'm, I just bring up that concern of what challenges we may face.
Danielle can tell you, there's been some heartburn on the part of the town on previous state-funded efforts that were funded through ARPA, and unfortunately, the state was not forthcoming in all of the reporting requirements to the town. They, they said, hey, do you want this funding for your, your customers? Okay, okay, now that you've given it to them, we need all of this. And it was-
We, we've done similar municipal utility relief programs. None of them are painless, but at the end of the day, we do help the customer, and ultimately, we recover past due accounts that we may not otherwise recover. With this, it would be, Councilman Pettit, we would upload a file to the Promise folks, and during that time, once we have submitted those applicants, we're required to commit to a no disconnect policy for that customer until we find out if they're eligible, and we would get those funds. So it does sort of eliminate some of the gray area with that particular customer.
But we have to implement a no disconnect policy for that customer, you're saying?
Right, until we deem that they're eligible, and if the funding is coming.
And if they give it an indication of what type of turnaround time that would take for them, like, we're not going to have six months, and then someone's really-
I believe we only have to commit to thirty days, but we can do as many.
Okay.
Is there a certain amount allocated to each town?
No, actually, it is a first-come, first-served basis, and some, when we spoke with these folks, some larger cities were actually applying as well. So honestly, by the time we get through the process, you know, there may not be a lot of funding remaining. It just depends, it was first-come, first-served.
And how would we advertise it?
Social media, we may even put an ad in paper.
They have, they have all of the suggested literature for us to provide.
So are we, are we advertising for a private entity, or are we advertising Virginia? Because it's Promise.
Promise is the agent for-
So they're just the facilitator, or, I mean?
Yes.
And actually, the way that this came about was actually through Page One. As you know, they provide a lot of assistance, and they actually brought the program to our attention. So, and it is a better way to validate the need.
I wish you could work that the person could apply, and the person received the funding themselves. And maybe somehow that funding is designed, that it has to come to the town, or whatever, but you know what I'm saying? Instead of getting the cart before the horse, if they received the funding and then could apply it to the bill, instead of us going without the funding, waiting to see if they qualify. So it's just a little awkward, it sounds, but.
One thing that the ladies of Promise mentioned to us is that, once we provide that literature and find out, you know, that that applicant is interested, it sort of erases that, that element of, I guess, you know, some, some folks don't want to come here to apply. They may be embarrassed about the situation, they, they may not want to come in and say, I need assistance. With this, they can go directly to the mobile app, or to the website and apply, and then we will know to upload their information. It sort of eliminates that face-to-face issue of, you know, we may need assistance, but we don't want to discuss it.
If there's money in the state that anybody in the state can apply for, I don't want to make our citizens not have the chance to get it. It sounds like it's a, it's a good thing, as long as it works.
Yeah, as y'all are, as long as y'all are comfortable with any additional, like, administrative burden, I think it's a no-brainer. We maybe recoup some revenue, the money's going to go somewhere.
We've done other programs in the past, and unfortunately, there's a lot of reporting, and we didn't find out about it until after the fact.
You feel more comfortable in this case, or?
In this case, there's minimal reporting, and it's basically uploading the reports at that time. It's not retroactive reporting, so.
Yeah, it's our understanding that because Promise is the agent for the Department of Social Services, they are absorbing a lot of the reporting requirement to the state and the federates, where, when it was simply the state administering it, they passed all the reporting requirements on to Danielle.
Yes.
And-
Typically, one day before the deadline.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
All right, any more discussion, counsel?
If there isn't anymore, I'd be honored to make the motion.
Thank you, Alex. Anybody else? Well, second.
Second.
Any more discussion? Danielle?
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
All right, Steve, the ARPA, the Dean Courts Construction?
Yes, sir. Following the authorization of council's desire for RACI to discuss the courts with the awarded contractor, they have provided a proposal in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars for their services to update the construction plans and permits, as well as all of the inspection associated with the improvements, which staff would request council's consideration of the authorization of ARPA funding for those services. funding for those services.
Have we got everything squared away on the court, as far as what we were doing, and donations, and all that? Was that...
Yeah, so, table this till our discussion later?
Yes, sir, that wouldn't have to...
Yeah.
Okay, with everybody?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we can make a decision on this until we...
All right. Uh, county, county, joint meeting, Steve?
Uh, yes, sir, the next joint meeting between the towns and, uh, county will be Thursday, February 2nd, at three o'clock, at the Stanley Fire Hall. Uh, council's requested to discuss who the town representatives would be, and if there are any specific agenda items that, uh, the town would like included on that agenda.
Uh, anybody wanna volunteer to go? Al, it's Tuesday or Thursday? That's a Thursday.
Thursday, sorry, Thursday, Thursday, February 2nd.
I should be able to make that. If anybody else can go, we'll bring it up again at the work session, but the work's in the schedule, it's, it could be kinda interesting, we don't really change the world, would we?
It's gonna be kinda fun.
Things come up, I mean, we're just talking, that's, we never did before, that, to me, it's, it's important. Well, let me know if that works for somebody, or anybody. All right, the, all right, the, uh, town council retreat, uh, we did this last year, we've done it last two years, and I think they're very valuable, um, get your all's opinion on it as well?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the, the date that's been thrown around is, uh, Saturday, February 11th.
Did that leave a conflict for anybody?
Are we talking, uh, about the same time as we...
Yeah, we'll probably start at nine, and try to end shortly after lunch.
Is that a weekend preceding our meeting for February, or, trying to remember the dates?
Yes, sir, I believe it is.
Okay, sounds good.
Do we have a location?
Yes, sir.
Same place? I think it was worthwhile, I mean, if you need...
I think they're good. All right, that's February 9th, all right, um...
Council's good with that, so we can confirm?
I think so, anybody have a...
Yeah, I'll have my phone on me to look, but, yeah, it should be fine.
All right, Jason, have anything for us?
No, sir, not tonight, thank you.
Here, I have, I got a, um, email, or, no, a text from Larry Hackel, this, this day. Let me read what it says, um, "Do you think the town would give Lois some kind of recognition for service to the community? Retirement party's January 28th." I think he's asking if we would have a, some type of resolution or something to recognize her for her service. I don't see anything wrong with that.
Oh, we can certainly do that, I would think. Everybody okay with that? Or, do you wanna add any more to that, or she's...
I mean, they gonna have their own agenda, and that day, the party, the, the owner of the party, the January 28th, the retirement thing.
I would say we'd probably do hours here, have her come one night.
I think it'd be more perfect.
I mean, what do y'all think of that?
We can invite her to the February meeting, and, yes, sir.
Oh, good, yeah. She's done a lot of work for this town.
She has, she, Steve writes a good proclamation, we could something.
If anyone has good history on, on everything that she's been involved with, that would help, too.
You know how long she's been there?
I don't know, but I said about, Mr. Hackel's on the board, he's known.
Oh, yeah, let him get that information, or something.
So, I'll get him to contact you, follow the stuff.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else in the council have anything?
I was gonna say, um, the art warehouse closing is kinda sad. I know they've moved some spots, and I hope they have success, I know Jim and the, everybody's been involved, and that's done a great job, and I, I hope the landlord doesn't sit there for two or three years vacant, um, cause I'm not real confident that it won't, personally, so, um, you know, it's private property, that's just how things go. Uh, but I appreciate Jim being there, diligence, a great place to send people, and it's been a, you know, been a mainstay for quite a while, so, I appreciate everything they did, and sad that it's, it's closed, but hopefully they can find some new space, and get some more momentum, and maybe, maybe that building will become something other than, you know, uh, underutilized, so, that's all.
Anybody else? Uh, I didn't mention, uh, of course, the board re, or council retreat, I usually ask anybody to bring one or two or three objectives, or goals, or something they wanna see accomplished, and we'll see how far we can get through those. My announcements, uh, of course, as Ron said, um, her, uh, retirement is, it's at Memson, Lois's retirement at the Memson, three o'clock?
It wasn't an RSVP, from what I could tell, from what I got in the mail. It's just an open meeting, open...
Yeah, I think it is, yeah.
It is?
I think so, yeah. It was just an open reception, I think. Uh, January 19th, it's the, uh, elected officials breakfast, and that's in Valley Cork, and it's free, so, you wanna go to that, um, you need RSVP by the...
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, who to, uh...
What is it, A D M? What time is it?
Uh, I can't remember what time it did say. It's in the, it's in the email, Steve sent it.
Who do we RSVP to?
The Gina at the chamber.
Okay.
It's eight o'clock.
Eight, okay. It's a nice event, and again, just, just networking, kinda, just to get to know people. All right, so, we need, um, those of you in the, uh, still here with us, we'll be going into closed session in just a minute, um, we'll come back out probably in at least a half an hour, I would not, not recommend you hang around, because essentially, we're done for the evening, but, uh, thank you all for being here, and again, good luck to you, and, Bill, thank y'all for being here.
Y'all wanna take that conversation outside, Jackie?
Yeah, good to talk outside.
Make your case.
Have we had that question?
Uh, yes, I do, you wanna do that again, Jason?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I hope the town council convene and go into closed meeting for the purposes of consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice, and for discussion of the potential disposition of publicly held real property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the town, as authorized by section 2.2, 3711A, eight, and three of the code of the Geneva. The subject matters are the potential legal obligations of conditional gift to the town, and the potential threat of a license in public property.
Second.
Any discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Alex White?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
All right, Jason, want to read the thing again?
And I move the closed meeting be adjourned into the Raytown Council reconvened open session.
Second that.
New discussion? All right, Danielle?
Mr. Bickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lohr?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Jason, you want to certify?
Yes, I move that with respect to the just completed closed session and to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the town council.
Second.
Discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Bickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lohr?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
All right, anybody else?
Did we skip the donation from the Art and Gym Maes? Was that something?
It was withdrawn.
Withdrawn?
He withdrew it? Okay.
All right, meeting adjourned.